That was some old 70s music that was playing. So glad I called the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to City Council briefing. Ms. Fisher, please call the role.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that councilmembers Dillon and Klitschke are absent.
We have a number of interviews today for boards and commissions. And the first one is Jennifer Honecker for the Ethics Commission. Jennifer, if you're in the house, come on down. Welcome, and thanks for stepping up. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thanks so much. My name is Jennifer Huffaker. I've lived in Spokane for just over 10 years. I'm originally from New Jersey, so if you hear any unusual pronunciations, know that there's an accent somewhere in there despite my best attempts to cover it up. I was admitted to the practice of law in Massachusetts in 2011. And honestly, there's no greater joy in my life than applying a set of rules to a set of facts. That's something that I do in my professional life. After becoming an attorney, I departed from the practice of law for about 12 years. I became a teacher, which is also given a set of rules and applying a set of facts to it. I became an assistant principal and just switched back from education back into the law in May. And so in my spare time, I like to apply rules to facts in crossword puzzles and logic puzzles. At the risk of sounding not that fun, I really thought the best way to serve my community was to do exactly what I'm good at. And I think that that's what the Ethics Commission is. There's a set of rules, and we want the public to make sure that they can trust our elected officials and staff members of the city by applying facts to those rules.
A fascinating journey, and I look forward to the backstory on lawyer/teacher/lawyer story. Any questions for Councilmember Bingle?
Yes, thank you for applying. Excited to have you. So this, I'll get into more serious question, but what's your go-to logic puzzle, then?
Free apps from the App Store.
Yeah, but like Sudoku or like what is it for you?
Oh, no, not numbers. Definitely like the murder logic puzzles. I don't know how taboo that is, but you know, there's like a murder mystery, so-and-so died, this person, like Clue, I guess.
I should have started with a different question, I guess. No, okay, so going through this, I really like the fact, you know, that you enjoy doing that because, again, what we need in our positions like these are just people who like this is what they truly enjoy and like doing, so I like to hear that. Are there anything in our, any things that you see in our current processes that are like this needs to be updated pretty quickly, or, you know, this is something that we do really well?
You know, I think the first thing is I want to make clear, I didn't apply to this to change it, but that doesn't also mean in investigating, I didn't uncover some things that I thought, well, I wish that could be different. And one area, and this reminds me of when I went to law school, I have a bachelor's degree in social work, and so humans are at my core. And I just didn't think it was fair that we all obey the law, but it takes a three-year doctoral study for at least $50,000 a year in order to understand the laws to which we're all beholden, right? And so I wonder if the ethics code, because all citizens are required to state exactly which part has been violated, I do wonder if there could be more plain language to make that more accessible.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? Councilmember Sapon.
Yeah, thanks for applying. One of my questions has to do with when do you think is the appropriate time for an Ethics Commissioner to recuse themselves from a hearing?
Absolutely. I think in line with all of the provisions in the Code of Ethics, there's, when there's any self-dealing, there could be an economic interest in the proceeding, one way or another. I think excessive familiarity with the person who's filing the complaint to where loyalty might be a question. And then I think, too, about the judge's canon, the appearance of impropriety. If it would lead the public to question the impartiality, I think I don't see a good reason not to recuse unless it would disrupt justice. That would be a different consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for applying. Nothing else is required of you. We will be voting, and then you'll be hearing from the Ethics Commission.
Thank you so much.
In 10 years, it's almost a newcomer, you know, in Spokane.
I know. Thank you.
All right. We are going to go on to the Transportation Commission. We have four applicants there. We're finally glad to meet all of you who put your names in. The first one I'm going to call up is Dillon. Okay, there you go, Dillon, welcome. Tell us why you're interested.
Thank you very much. So I, I've been in Spokane now for about four years, but also did my undergraduate at Gonzaga, so I've gotten to experience it at a couple of different eras. Very excited, living back here, about the growth and some of the really amazing stuff that's been happening in the city. And between my undergrad at Gonzaga and moving back here, I studied a master's in urban planning with a focus on transportation at UCLA. And just am really excited about the potential for this commission to be able to kind of put some of that knowledge to practice. I currently work over at Gonzaga, helping to manage some volunteer programs, and love that job, but really excited about the, this, the potential of this commission to kind of help inform and guide some of the already great transportation policy and work that's been happening.
Councilmember Cathcart. Yeah, are you applying for a specific technical position, or is this representative of one of the neighborhood districts, or which position are you applying for?
Yes, I'm applying for the parking position.
Okay, so my, I guess my question would be, just reading through your application, there's not one reference to parking anywhere. So if you could talk about what your views are, what your background is, what your expertise in parking is, and then specifically, I assume, a lot of your focus would be in that Logan Neighborhood where we do have parking challenges, and so what would be your emphasis there?
For sure. So I did study parking policy during my master's program at UCLA. I had the good fortune of studying with Donald Shoup, who's one of the preeminent parking scholars. And just have a, I feel like a solid foundation in pragmatic parking policy, parking policy that works in, in a lot of the policies that we've already put in place here in downtown Spokane with like reasonably priced parking, street parking, off-street parking that encourages folks to kind of not circle the block, but get off, off the street right away. I think looking at the Logan Neighborhood, one opportunity that I see is, as a Gonzaga employee myself, I see how we kind of all descend on that neighborhood in the morning, and it's very easy to not buy a parking pass for on-campus because there's ample parking off the street. And I see the stress that that can put on both students and full-time residents alike. So I think there's potential in neighborhoods around large employers, but especially around Gonzaga and the Logan Neighborhood, to implement potentially a residential parking zone where we have a permit process that full-time residents are able to apply for a very low-cost or free parking pass, and then anybody else who is parking there regularly would need to potentially, you know, pay or have some kind of additional barrier to parking there. Sorry, not a barrier, but make it a little bit easier for the folks who live there and make it so that they're not being overwhelmed by like a large employer and the employees coming in.
Just one follow-up. In, in particular, that area, but basically anywhere outside the downtown core, I guess what are your thoughts on broadly speaking, just more rigorous enforcement, increasing or changing of fees to mitigate or to try to disincentivize certain behaviors? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think charging new fees is always, tends to be unpopular with the public, but I do think that there is space and some strong policies, examples from across the country, of potentially charging for street parking in neighborhoods like Logan Neighborhood or areas like that where there is a bit of a demand for that street parking. Being able to charge, and again, that's where I say like the residential parking, kind of carve out some space for folks who live there full-time, but being able to charge and then invest that money back into the neighborhood. So in fixing sidewalks, planting street trees, installing lights and amenities in the neighborhood to kind of bring the sidewalk street, streets in that area to life a little bit more.
Yes, one more?
One more, Councilman Cathcart.
All right. In your application, you do talk about supporting or wanting to see some version of a road diet on Hamilton. Could you talk more about how you would go about accommodating that with the volume of traffic? I mean, we're seeing it live right now with the Market Street being shut down. It's nuts, all over northeast Spokane. You can barely get anywhere. So how would you road diet that in a way that doesn't harm residents or businesses?
That's a great question. I think Hamilton is really tricky. I see every day the, the challenges of it. Takes a huge volume of traffic through there. A lot of folks are coming off I-90, coming off the interstate and kind of continuing almost at that speed, and I know that there are a lot of safety concerns talking to residents in that area. There is, you know, I think there's potential to kind of stagger a road diet as you go up from I-90, and so I know a lot of cars are turning off at various streets along that way as you go further north. And so being able to kind of slow down traffic more and more as you get further north. I know the freeway going north-south is still a ways off, but there's potential down the road for a lot of traffic to kind of be diverted over there as well, north-south traffic. So there is potential down the road to, to potentially diet. There also are traffic calming measures that could be taken into account without necessarily taking lanes away. And I think potentially installing some additional crossings or higher visibility crossings on Hamilton, especially when you look at Logan Elementary School and the areas around the school, just to increase safety for the folks who are living there.
And all very important, and I would just encourage you, if you're appointed, I, just finishing a comment. If you are appointed to the commission, I would strongly encourage you to advocate for and do it yourself, but more public engagement, particularly north of Logan, because what you're talking about will have significant impacts upstream to folks who are commuting downtown and around the community. And I think it remains to be seen who the administration is going to appoint from our district. They have not communicated that to us, but I'm hoping that it is somebody who will have a broader, broad perspective of northeast and all of the impacts that the different downstream changes and modifications will have. Again, we're seeing it live right now with shutting down Market the way we are. It's creating chaos.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bingle.
First off, you know what I love about America? I love that we have preeminent parking minds. That's what I love. That to me says we have a successful country right there. But so I, I have some questions. I, I hear what you're saying about the speed coming off of I-90. As somebody who takes that exit regularly, totally know what you mean. You know, it does make it a little bit more dangerous for folks walking and, but I have real concerns with dieting that road. And so I think that there are other things we could do, like traffic specials or whatever, when we have a traffic unit, which we've been all advocating for, to help mitigate those concerns. But we recently removed parking requirements for residential and commercial. What are your views on that?
Yes. I think, I think it's a positive step for Spokane. I think it's a, it's something that will help make residential development especially quite a bit easier. Looking at some of the transportation development that's been taking place, including the City Line, the Rapid Line there, if there's potential for a little bit denser housing around some of those stations, and the opportunity for folks to get to downtown, to jobs, to services, whatever they might need, without necessarily needing a car, I think that's a great opportunity. I think the nice thing about removing requirements, rather than making any kind of mandate, is that it allows developers and the, the market to kind of dictate how much parking is provided. So it may be that there's still a demand that developers are hearing for lots of parking, and it may be that they are able to reduce the cost of building because they're finding there's not as much of a demand.
And I, I like the idea of, you know, removing the mandates, but potentially for a neighborhood like Logan doing something, like you said, where parking permits for, for the residents is great. One more question for you here. We have a parking advisory committee that has met very sparsely, but parking, I don't know if you know, is a very touchy subject in the city of Spokane. Some of us have proposed things and been shot down pretty quickly and pretty, pretty hard. So have you met with any of the parking advisory committee members, past or present, to discuss with them the challenges of parking?
I have not yet, but I would look forward to that opportunity, absolutely.
One last quick question. How do you say Gonzaga?
How do I say Gonzaga?
Yeah.
Gonzaga.
Gonzaga.
Yeah.
Not Gonzaga, right?
No.
Gonzaga.
Gonzaga.
Okay. Yeah, cool.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Thank you. We're going to take just a quick interruption here. We actually have Representative Jerry Polet on the line who wants to come to us. Welcome, Representative. Are you able to get her up and going? Up, him? Are we ready? Oh, there we go. Put my glasses on.
Thank you for inviting me very much.
Welcome, go ahead.
Well, I want to start, first, I'm here in my capacity as Executive Director of Heart of America Northwest, which is the region's first and largest group working for the cleanup of the Hanford Nuclear Reservation, where I've been Executive Director and Council since we first stopped Hanford from being national high-level nuclear waste dump in 1986, and informed by my work as faculty member at UW School of Public Health and Western Washington University College of the Environment. To talk about the concerns we share about Hanford radioactive waste being trucked through Spokane on I-90, and I had, I can prepare some slides, I can answer questions. What would your druthers be for, for me here?
Yeah, I, thank you so much for being here. We had a request from councilmembers to kind of learn more about what's happening here. There was a lot of concern when we heard it was being proposed to come through Spokane, and so there were some councilmembers that were wanting to learn more about what it was and what the impact that it was before we voted on a letter later today.
So would it be appropriate for me to share screen and go through a few slides, giving the background?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Not familiar with WebEx the way I should be, but I think I'm getting it. Here we go. Can you see the first slide here?
Not yet.
Okay, well, I don't know what I'm doing. It says I'm sharing my screen, and I'm sorry if it's...
Jacobi, is there any way we can assist him?
You're sharing your screen.
Yeah, you could email it to G Bird, B-Y-R-D, at SpokaneCity.org, and...
G, what, what was that? G?
Bird, B-Y-R-D.
B-Y-R-D at Spokane City. Okay. Do that immediately, and then I just start speaking. Give me one moment. I will tell you that I will be laughed at by, by my son, who works for the Seattle City Council, for my inability to have mastered this properly for you.
Your son will understand, that's why they have legislative assistance.
Indeed. Okay.
If that hasn't come through yet, I wonder if that could get set up in the background and we could do another interview?
Can you work on that? Jacobi, go ahead. Representative Polet, we're going to let you figure that out. I have another interview that'll take maybe about five minutes, and then we'll come back to you, if that's all right with you?
Of course it is.
All right. So with that, I'm going to then bring up Grant Shipley. Is Grant in the room? Welcome. Give us a little bit about you, Grant, and why you're interested in the Transportation Commission.
Sure. I'm Grant Shipley, a lifetime resident of Spokane. I have been involved in, heavily involved in bicycles for, I don't know, 35 years or so, and I have watched the bicycle infrastructure arise from the ashes. Basically, when I started riding, there wasn't anything, and today we have a pretty significant alternative transport infrastructure. And as I've aged, you know, I kind of realized that this stuff doesn't just grow out of the ground, it arises because people carefully plan it. And I feel like I am, have a knowledgeable voice to help with that planning.
You spoke specifically to the Fish Lake Trail completion. What's your passion around that?
Well, I think alternative transport habits are best developed when you're young. And in my experience, when I used to work, I rode the bus quite a bit out to Liberty Lake, and it was always impressed upon me that by far, the most-used line on the bus system is the one to Chenee. And it's done as a commuter line for students. And as I've ridden, I've ridden to Chenee on my bike for, since I started riding, 30-some years ago. But as the Fish Lake Trail has developed and with the advent of e-bikes, I feel like if that trail were completed, which just requires three bridges, we would have a true alternative transport commuter path from Spokane to the campus at Eastern that is, boy, it would be an outstanding start to the day. It would really relieve some of the pressure on STA, and, you know, those are kind of specialized coaches that they run out there. And it helps develop that habit when you're young.
Councilman Cathcart. Yeah, just to clarify, which position are you applying for?
Member-at-large.
Just member-at-large?
Yeah.
Okay, so not one of the expert positions. What would be, I guess, just, what would be the main priority for you as a Transportation Commissioner, as it, you know, as like the work plan is coming together and as, as we're looking at different policies and changes, what would be a priority in your mind that the Transportation Commission should be taking on?
Well, my main goal is around traffic safety. So anything involving, the main thing you can do for traffic safety is to reduce speeds. Well, easiest way to reduce the speed of a vehicle is to convert it from a motor vehicle to a bicycle or a scooter or anything that doesn't have a motor. So I'm a big fan of comprehensive network that will allow people to get from where they live to where they shop or work or whatever you need to do.
But I assume regardless of mode, you're not suggesting a bias towards one mode, but, but supporting all modes? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, yeah, yeah. I'm, with the, I mean, I, I own two cars myself, I understand the importance, but...
Councilman Bingle.
Yeah, as the Park Board Liaison, we talk about Fish Lake Trail quite a bit. But I think you make a really good point there on, specifically with e-bikes, I think that even as biking becomes less manual, that you're going to see an uptick in that. And so the Fish Lake Trail in particular, but are there other spaces around town that you see where, you know, we can improve our infrastructure, you know, maybe part of the trail system, maybe not, when it comes to that?
Sure. There, the big challenges with anything that's not a car is crossing arterials. So anything we can do to reduce the lane count on arterials, if you have four lanes, to make a safe crossing, unless you're Superman, it really requires a signal, which is very expensive infrastructure. So the main, the issues are crossings, the freeway, and the river. Those are all three things that are really difficult challenges as soon as you take the metal from around you.
Yeah. And a former councilwoman used to ask this question all the time, but what high school did you, did you attend?
I grew up in the Valley, and I went to Central Valley Schools, although I did graduate from West Valley High School, I only went through my senior year and then went to Gonzaga University.
Nice.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. You'll be hearing from us.
Thank you.
All right. Representative Polet, are you think, you think you're, oh, there we go. I see this presentation up on the screen. You're muted?
And now I'm unmuted. Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate the help. And let's just go to the first, next slide here, and I'll just say, so why is Hanford, even in the U.S. Department of Energy, which runs Hanford, considering trucking waste through Spokane? There are tens of millions of gallons of high-level nuclear waste in massive tanks at Hanford, and these are the same high-level nuclear waste tanks that have been in the news for decades and decades. And these are the same high-level nuclear waste tanks that have been in the news for decades and decades. As of last month, a third tank has been acknowledged by the U.S. Department of Energy to be actively leaking. And we all know that the Columbia River runs for 50 miles right through the center of Hanford. So what gets into the groundwater will reach the Columbia River. It's a matter of time. The treatment plants to vitrify or turn the high-level nuclear waste into glass are decades behind schedule. One of the three originally proposed plants is planned to be operational next year for the lowest radioactivity portion of the waste coming out of those tanks. But it is only sized large enough to treat or glassify about half of the waste that qualifies for this plant as low activity in the tanks. And even if it works and we were to do all of the waste, when we combine the ways that they wanted to, they proposed to dispose of on the Hanford site in landfills, contamination from those landfills is projected to leach out, contaminate the groundwater significantly above drinking water standards. And that will flow into the Columbia River over and over and over again for 10,000 years. So that brings us to why the Energy Department is looking at a different program. Next slide. Can we go to the next slide? There we go. And the U.S. Government Accountability Office, GAO, has issued several reports documenting that if the Energy Department were able to ship lower-level radioactive chemical mixed hazardous waste from the tanks to a licensed disposal site in West Texas or Utah, where there is no groundwater underneath the site that would ever be at risk from leaching contamination out of the landfill, then the Energy Department could speed up emptying the tanks at Hanford by decades and save billions of dollars. This was called the Testbed Initiative. And there is a facility right next door to Hanford, privately owned, fully permitted by Washington State and under federal hazardous waste law as well, and delegated authority from Nuclear Regulatory Commission to the state to treat Hanford nuclear chemical wastes called PermaFix Northwest. It is immediately adjacent to the Hanford site and treats a significant amount of radioactive waste from Hanford every year and then ships it back to the Hanford site for disposal. They tested the possibility of, with three gallons from high-level waste tanks a few years ago, and demonstrated that they could treat it, solidify it, before it was trucked to West Texas for disposal. And it would meet all the standards for disposal in West Texas as set by the U.S. EPA and the state of Texas. Later this year, the Energy Department plans on shipping 2,000 gallons of liquid, but not to be treated and solidified first in, next door at PermaFix Northwest, but to be shipped 1,000 gallons of liquid to Texas and 1,000 gallons to Utah for them to demonstrate if they can do it at their locations. And of course, shipping liquid waste is quite a different hazard than shipping solid waste. Next slide. After the 2,000 gallons, if that's successful, the Energy Department, under a draft agreement with Washington State, has said, "We want to be able to, if this works, we want to ship millions of gallons from at least 22 of the high-level waste tanks to West Texas and/or Utah for disposal." And what is so disturbing is that there is no environmental impact statement before they make this decision. They are doing what they call a supplement analysis, which is a, not a public process, but simply saying, "Should we do an environmental impact statement? Is it required?" During the course of the comment period, we, by reviewing documents, we discovered that the Energy Department had, a year ago, approved without NIS, shipping additional millions of gallons of, and huge amount of metric tons of solid waste to Hanford that's related waste, and said, "We don't need an environmental impact statement to do it", shipping it to the same facilities. So what we'd be doing, talking about is, did we? There we go. We're talking about a cumulative impact from two decisions of shipping waste, not just one. And we're talking about millions of gallons through the year 2040. And the Energy Department has several choices they could make. They could solidify the waste before they ship it. They could ship it by rail instead of by truck.
So Representative Paulette?
Yes.
I'm going to cut you off. I want, because I want to see if there's any council members who have any questions before we have to move on. Are there any questions? Councilmember McCaffrey, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a lot of questions.
Well, you can't ask a lot, but you can ask a couple.
Well, it's a little hard for me to take a vote on something I'm not educated on, so that might be helpful. So I guess my first question is, what, what is the, the process to solidify? How does that work? What's the, what exactly are the steps they take to solidify the material from, from a liquid to a solid?
So essentially, this process involves treating or destroying any organic materials to meet what are called land disposal restrictions under federal and state hazardous waste law, and then binding the material in a cement-like substance. They call it a grout or cementatious form that is approved by the EPA for hazardous waste disposal and by the NRC and the Waste Acceptance Criteria of Licensed Disposal Facilities. So it's within a barrel, but if it was not in the barrel, you would see something that looked like a cement. But it is a cement that is specifically designed for each tested and portion of the waste in phases to make sure that the hazardous substances are locked in the matrix or destroyed, along with locking in the matrix, the radionuclides.
So if that, if that barrel were to... Sorry, go ahead.
It's still radioactive, of course.
Okay.
It'd be a solid that is disposable and will presumably last quite a long time in the near-surface landfill. And, but no solid is ever going to stay without any leaching. What's important is that it not leached to groundwater, and that's where the advantage of these two disposal sites.
So if one of these barrels were to fall off the truck and it broke open and the cement were to crack open, is that radio, is that like emitting radioactivity? Does somebody have to be within a couple of feet touching it? What, how, how would somebody in that situation maybe get some sort of radioactive poisoning?
Well, the odd, the ability of the, you know, something that fell and broke open to actually spill would be very minor because you would have, you have a transport container and a solid within it. But theoretically, it could happen and there could be some radioactive dust from breaking it open theoretically. Unlike the liquid transport, where you'd have both an airborne and a liquid spread that could be volatile and continue to spread radioactive. And I have to emphasize, and chemical contamination if it's untreated. The solid would be, you would have people who, you'd need to have someone who, with radiological protection. It's not high dose, but you need people to be suited up properly and have them monitored to pick it back up, overpack it, put it in overpack, and put it on a different transport truck. But you wouldn't be engaged in a, you know, having to absorb and clean up. And you probably wouldn't have to dig up the pavement unlike a liquid.
And then, so with the liquid though, the liquid is, is as it is? There's no treatment or anything that's done to it to reduce the radioactivity or to somehow make it a little bit less harmful?
Yeah, so be, under the proposal and some of my slides, which can be shared, you know, show the schematics of this, before the waste is removed from the high-level waste tank, it goes through an ion exchange column and the most radioactive elements, cesium and strontium, are removed in the tank. And what comes out of the tank is a much lower radioactive liquid. So it is pretreated, but the chemicals haven't been treated at all and it is still significantly radioactive.
And so can you explain why they're choosing?
Yeah, just for timeliness, I was going to suggest that maybe we defer this for a week so that all council members who have more questions could follow up, just because we do have more things on the agenda today. But that would give Councilmember McCaffrey an opportunity to ask lots of questions. I'm sure Representative Paulette would be more than happy to meet and chat about it.
Absolutely. Thank you for elevating the conversation, Representative Paulette. That's very helpful.
Thank you for considering this letter. You know, the state of Oregon has weighed in very heavily, saying, "Do not ship liquids." And I think the city of Spokane and I thank the mayor for doing so can make a big difference here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to resume our, our interviews for the Transportation Commission. Is Johnny Harris in the house? Online?
Hello?
Hi there, welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself, Johnny.
My name is Johnny Harris. I've been car-free in Spokane for about four years, commute by bike and bus. And I'm excited about this commission because I see transportation infrastructure as a real way to impact the quality of life for every citizen. It's like age, can't drive because of age or ability. And we can provide other ways for people to build community and use public space and third spaces. And, yeah, I'm all about the community aspect.
Excellent, excellent. Any questions for Johnny? Councilman McCaffrey?
Yeah, just wondering which position you were applying for?
District One.
The District One, okay. So I, I guess I would ask you then, how, how do you feel you can represent all of District One as a non-automobile user, strictly bike user, given that the vast, vast, vast majority of users are auto-oriented and centric? How do you feel you can best represent them?
Well, I've been a car driver for most of my life. So I do understand that experience. And also, I think I can represent those who work downtown and struggle to, with the parking situation. I work at Wild Sage as a line cook, and so parking is always an issue. Buses aren't always running when we get off work. And there's also like the issue of safety with night biking or commuting like that. So also carpool a lot, so I can speak to using automobiles in that way.
So if I could just follow up, I guess the other question I would ask then is, is, what would be your, I guess familiarity with the remainder of District One? You know, obviously downtown is a pretty key component of District One, but it is just one neighborhood ultimately. What's your familiarity with the rest of the, the district and the needs and, and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I've lived in a few areas of town and have commuted all around. I've had commutes of up to 10 miles getting out to the valley. And I think, you know, maybe I wouldn't have a complete understanding of, of drivers in every area of the town, but I think biking next to people on Hamilton or anywhere in town, I can provide a different perspective of what it's like to be on that street. And I can definitely understand how drivers are experiencing me as a biker or a busser at times.
Thank you.
Councilman Bingo.
Yeah, hey, thanks for, for your interest in serving the community. I appreciate that. I, I also represent District One and curious to know what your thoughts would be on if there were a proposal to diet some of our north-south thoroughfares like Hamilton or some of the others?
Yeah, I'm personally a big fan of dieting roads, as long as we have healthy alternatives, like a really efficient bus system or protected bike lanes. So if we're encouraging people to drive less or drive in different areas, then we need to have alternatives that are just as or more efficient.
Thank you. Councilman McCluskey.
Thanks for your interest in this, Johnny. What neighborhood do you live in right now that you commute to Wild Sage from?
Downtown.
Oh, thank you.
It's a nice commute.
Any other questions for Johnny? Again, thank you, Johnny, for your interest in serving on the Transportation Commission. You'll be hearing from us.
Thank you, guys.
And our last interview, and thank you for your patience, Kaylee. Welcome.
So I'm Kaylee Jackman. I live in West Central and I'm applying for just the Citizen Input position. And I'm just really excited. I've been interested in city planning and transportation and bus systems, pretty much the whole thing for quite a while. So I'm just really excited to be able to be actually involved, hopefully.
Councilman Bingo.
Yeah, thank you again for your interest in the, in the position. So there may be times where you, as a commissioner on this district, will disagree with what the city staff is presenting. And how would you handle your, your thoughts and your feelings in that moment when it's, you know, maybe somebody who has, you know, expertise in something, but you disagree with them? How would you handle that situation?
I feel like my approach is very data-forward. Previously, I saw a really good heat map of all of the fatalities that were in Spokane and what the cause of that was. And that would be my priority. And if they're an expert, I would trust that they are also looking at it from a data point of view and that they would have some, you know, logical backing to it. And hopefully, we can find some common ground in that.
Yeah, what is your preferred mode of transportation?
I think walking would be ideal, but I tend to take the bus the most. But today, I took the beautiful Centennial Trail here, so.
Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time and your interest in serving. We will be in touch.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
All right, thank you very much, Council President. So for the current council agenda tonight, I'll just start from the back on, under the special considerations as far as the amendment for the letter to the governor.
I have moved to adopt the Zepone Amendment.
Second. It's been moved. Can we speak to the amendment?
Yeah, the amendment was just, Jackson, it was the minor changes that...
Yeah, the amendment, it was just, Jackson, it was the minor changes that, it's a member, Dylan, requested that just kind of emphasized more about the solidification process. It was about, he just wanted clarification on that, or support for the solidification process.
First, I want to adopt this amendment.
Okay. It's been moved, and sir, second to adopt the amendment. It's been moved and second to adopt the amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes?
No, or abstain for lack of information.
All right.
So I personally am ready to move forward with this. I think it's really timely and important, but if council members would prefer to wait a week to learn more, it's...
Five more minutes, and I would have been fine, but you cut me off.
Well, this is just us signing our names, too. If you're not comfortable signing your name, you don't have to add your name to the letter. So I would prefer not to defer it personally. I think that I'm ready to move forward, and it's an important issue that I think we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you on that point. Again, Councilmember Cathcart, had we given him five more minutes, would have been in that space. And, you know, for a topic as important as this, you know, I think it's important that we all have the information that we need to be able to sign on to this letter. And while, again, I feel comfortable moving forward with it, again, it's an important topic, and I feel like the opportunity to get the answers or the questions answered from, you know, the person was taken away from one of our council members. And so I think that it would be appropriate to defer it for at least a week to where we can get some answers to the questions that we have before moving forward.
I may suggest that if it's only five more minutes, I bet you by 6:00, Representative Paulette could get on the phone and answer those five questions, five more minutes of questions with you, that we wouldn't need it deferred.
So I'm in support of the one-week deferral. Representative Paulette was able to come visit us today, was really not planned in our briefing session today, and I did not know how the conversation was going to go with the other things that's on our legislative agenda. So Councilmember Cathcart, I apologize if you felt five more minutes would have given that. However, for those of us who are interested in this and want more information, I think a week is not unreasonable for whoever wants to do the research, or for citizens who want to reach out to us and make their opinion knowns between now and next week. I think that is an appropriate path forward. Councilmembers opposed?
I would just speak that this was a pilot for 2024, so there is some urgency to this matter, that I was advocating for us to suspend the rules previously. But I understand if council needs the time, we're a deliberative body that takes time.
For the record, I supported that quick timeline, okay? But unfortunately, again, for us as a council to make a statement, especially one this important, if we can get to a 7-0 on this, I think that that is a really powerful statement to make as opposed to 6 and an abstention, because five more minutes would have done it. And so for me, it's not, it's not the content, it's not anything like that. Again, I'm supportive, but for an issue as important as this, a 7-0, I think would be a much more powerful statement.
So my question to Councilmember Cathcart is, we have email and phone number, would you be interested in trying to make, get those couple of questions answered before?
You can schedule the vote whenever you want. I don't know that I have the time to set aside in the next hour to have a special conversation. I assume we were going to get the answers at this meeting, and we're not. So if you want to vote, that's fine. I might just send my own letter with a list of questions that I'm looking to get answered, because I just think, I, you know, I didn't have any sort of a special, you know, meeting or opportunity to have an in-depth understanding of what's going on at Hanford, and I only learned of this frankly when your letter came forward, because we haven't had that. And I would just think something that is this critical, this important, this big, would demand a hearing, like an actual hearing here amongst this council. We're talking about nuclear waste coming through our city, and so why have we not had a broader conversation of this, but we're just going to sign a letter and send it off? I, again, send your letter if you want to. I might send my own, but it just, more information. We should be a thoughtful body. Everything should be about, do we actually understand all the ins and outs of what we're dealing with? And maybe all of you do, I just do not feel. I was not elected to understand nuclear science, so I'm just trying to get a better understanding so I know that what we're saying and asking for makes sense.
Councilmember McCliskie?
I know some of us have more familiarity with Hanford than others. I've had the opportunity to tour it, to canoe the area for the reach that's closed. But I did want to point out, in this letter, we're asking for SEPA review, which would require public hearing, which I agree, totally makes sense. I don't know why we're not already having a public hearing.
So there's a motion on the floor for...
There's not. I'll move to defer it for one week. Or I, let me withdraw that motion. I would ask the question, do you think you could get your answers in the next hour? If so, then I can make the motion later, but if not, then...
Don't, I wouldn't hold off for me. Just move forward, and if I can get an answer to some of these questions, I will, but some of them I'm just not sure if I will or not.
Okay. Okay, then, Mr. Jones?
Okay. And then, I don't know, Council President, if you did have one more amendment or change on one of the resolutions?
The COPS ordinance?
Yes.
The resolution?
Resolution.
A resolution, 0090.
0090.
Yes.
I still haven't received any information from Jeff Johnson, and I would like to just defer it indefinitely until we get, or I get some information on data that I need.
Second.
Councilmember Bingo?
I can understand, you know, wanting to get information and a deferral. I don't support an indefinite deferral, but if you wanted to do a few weeks or something like that, I would potentially support that. But an indefinite deferral means it's likely not coming back. And so if we wanted to amend that to be three weeks or so, then I'm open for it.
So there's a motion, a second. Councilmember McCliskie?
I was just going to mention, I don't think I'm going to be supporting any sole source resolutions like this. I feel like we're in a really scary budget time, and I just don't think making a lot more exceptions to our normal process is something I'm going to be supporting going forward until we're on a little bit more solid footing.
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Bingo, then Councilmembers opposed?
Well, we make so many exceptions for our process, it's kind of silly that we even have processes anymore. I mean, we ignore the code, we ignore all kinds of things on a regular basis, so. But I understand the argument on sole source. I've been up here arguing against sole source in a lot of ways. I would argue in this case, there are literally two options that could even conceivably do this, and one would have absolutely no interest, and that is Scope. They are a county-focused organization. The other is COPS. So if what we're saying is we want to kill the contract with COPS, we should just say that, because that is clearly the message that I am receiving from the other side of the seventh floor, is that there is no interest in this program, which is frustrating. I'm new to it. I mean, I just joined the board earlier this year, I think Councilmember Bingo was on it prior to me. And so I am just incredibly frustrated at the thought that this organization that has been around for 20 some odd years, has done a lot of good, and provides a significant amount of volunteer hours for making our neighborhood safer, would be completely cut out. Now, is this exactly right, or the numbers exactly right? I don't know. But the point is that we can have a broader, you know, discussion of that if we want to defer this. But to simply say that we should just kill the contract with COPS without that discussion, I don't know that I would agree. And I think we should have, if that is the plan, then we probably should put on our public safety agenda, a conversation between some of our officers and, as well as Jeff Johnson, to talk about just the partnerships and the interactions. And, I mean, just latent fingerprinting alone, I mean, talk about low-income people and the harm that this would cause. Like, our police do not have the resources, we're definitely not giving them the resources to go out and do latent fingerprinting and identify property crimes. But guess who is? COPS. And so if we want to say no more of that, sorry, we, you know, you live in a low-income neighborhood, we're not going to have a cop come out and do this. Or if you live in a high-income neighborhood, we're not going to have a cop come out and do this. But really, it's the low-income person that's going to get harmed, because they're the ones that can least afford it. And so there will be nothing that comes of it. And that, to me, is not acceptable at all. Now, if we want to reform this, we want to talk more about how different ways that we could interact, different, you know, opportunities for us to work together, all for it. If we want to do a short deferral, I'm all for that. But so far, there's been zero feedback from the administration on wanting to move forward with this organization that has been around for a very long time. And there really hasn't been any comment too much, except for Lily, and I give that to you, Councilmember Navrat, you made it clear that you had some questions, but there really hasn't been anything else. And so I would welcome the opportunity to have a sit-down with Jeff. We could put it on public safety if Councilmember Dylan is amenable, or we can put it on the next finance, and we'll have that conversation. I think that's worthwhile.
Councilmember Bingo, and then Councilmembers opposed?
Yeah, no, I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Cathcart just said. You know, I actually had an interview with some students at Gonzaga, asking about the COPS program. And as a free-market enthusiast and advocate, I think it's great to have multiple organizations, because competition's good for the marketplace. Currently, I don't see another organization doing this work. If somebody else were to take up this work and then to apply for the, or be able to apply for the contract, I think that makes a ton of sense. Again, I think, you know, I'm not a big fan of sole source myself, unless it's truly, there's only one source, and that's what it seems to be at this moment. And so if there's anybody in the community wanting to establish, you know, a service like this, I think, you know, you would have a real shot at a city contract. Because again, I think, you know, what we're looking for is the best paying for our buck and what's going to be the most impactful in the community. Councilmember Cathcart described a lot of things that COPS does. There are two positions within COPS where they're just victims advocates, and I think that that would be something that gets lost in this, is that we would lose victim advocacy in the community, and I think that that would be a big loss, again, for victims of crimes who, SPD being overwhelmed with the call volume, not able to get to these, you know, there's a level of service to the community that would be lost, and I think that that would be hard to do. And again, if it is that we're just wanting to kill COPS, let's just say it, I guess, you know? But I know, for one, I believe Council, former Councilwoman Stratton is going to be here tonight to speak on COPS, who's a huge advocate of that program. And so again, if we want more information, which I think is totally, you're right as a council member, and I support that, I think you should be getting the information you're looking for. Again, I would support a short-term deferral, but not an indefinite.
Councilmember Mr. Oppone?
Yeah, I was just going to speak to, I think there are some questions about results and trying to see those results before moving forward with a sole source. I don't think a sole source is actually killing any contracts. You can still come forward with a contract, just sole source cuts down potential future competition and trying to get a better understanding of that. So if answers about performance are able to be clear, they can come back through the process again. This doesn't kill anything forever.
Councilmember Navrat?
Yeah, I mean, just the insinuation of saying that we want to kill the contract with COPS is just not, not correct. And I have seen, years ago, the work of COPS when, again, living on East Central for almost 30 years, when they were next to Fresh Soul, I did see a lot of, you know, them working with the community. I take my kids there also, but I guess after COVID, I just haven't seen anything. And again, I have gone to where they are right now, in the MLK Center. They did not open the door for me when I tried to, you know, get some questions. I also, I've met with constituents in District Two. They also are not able to have anyone answer the phone number, or when they go to the 29th, which is now underneath or right next to the Bass and Robbins, or MLK. So I just, I need to know exactly what they're doing. I've gathered from some other council members that COPS is working in their district, but I just want to know what's happening in East Central or District Two. But by all means, I don't want to kill the contract, I just want answers, and I'll be more than happy to bring it back into committee. I don't want to kill indefinitely, because again, I know what it means to have that resource there for neighbors.
Councilmember McCliskie?
Yeah, I didn't know that was going to be what was taken from my statement, but that's absolutely not what I'm trying to do. I met with Jeff Johnson on Friday and talked to him at length about what he's up to and what they're doing. And from my understanding, I've met with him twice since I became a council member, is that the victim advocacy part actually moved over to the YWCA, and they were actually happy with that. So shuffling what people do around sometimes ends up being a good thing in this community. But I just think, at this time, we need to really think about how we diversify all of our funding sources. And so I've talked with him and offered to help out with fundraising with him. But I just don't, really, I'm just not in a place to be locked into a lot of outside services and sole source things that, I just don't know where we're at on that. I feel like we're on kind of shaky ground, and that is going to be my position on other sole source requests as well, when it comes to things that aren't like pipe or something very straightforward.
Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I guess then I would say if that's something where it's like, we're not, if we're not looking for more informa, if we're looking for more information, then I think, again, a defined deferral makes sense. And then we tell, you know, Mr. Johnson, like, hey, if we don't get it by now, this is going to fail, right? Like, you need to give us some information. I think there would be some urgency there, and I think we would get our responses. If not, then we vote no on the contract, or not on the contract, but if the designation is sole source. Or if it's just we're opposed to sole source, then let's just vote no on it and say, sole source is not the direction that we're looking to go. I don't think an indefinite deferral here is the proper course. That's the point that I'm trying to make. More than anything else in the statements is, the indefinite deferral, I don't think is proper.
So my position is, COPS has been around for over 20-plus years. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. It has evolved from its first iteration of what it did in the community, and has, I won't say mission drift, but taken on a lot of other things. My concern, i.e. the fingerprinting, could that not be done at our school? So what are we looking at, that those services could be partnered or shared by others going forward? Really, what's their defined role? Everybody likes to talk about data, what's the outcome? So we haven't talked about how it's impacting our communities. And really, I grant that since COVID challenges have been there about volunteerism, which is down across the board. We recognize that. So I am in support, because I don't want to kill indefinite deferral. That does leave the door open for it to come back, however Mr. Johnson wants to present his material. What else I haven't heard is, we really haven't heard from our police chief as how he sees COPS being integrated into whatever his policing model is. Is that going to be integrated into community policing? I think that's a conversation we need to have with him. Not from the officers, which is important, but that needs to come from the leadership, what that will look like going forward. So I think that's another consideration, is why I'll be supporting the indefinite deferral. Any other comments before we take? It's been moved and seconded for the indefinite deferral on the sole source. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Thank you. And then on ordinance number 36120, Mr. Brown?
I'm looking for another deferral for probably a month at this point in time.
So moved.
Second.
We do have a meeting scheduled, I think in about two weeks. Some people are on vacation, and I'm hopeful we can bring this to a conclusion.
Okay, what's the project, though?
The Adams Street vacation.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Eldon, what was the date you wanted it deferred to?
October 21st.
October 21st.
So moved.
It's been moved here, second?
Second.
All those in favor of this deferral, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think...
We need to start taking bets on this.
Ms. Fisher, did we have some cleanup on the first reading?
Yes. The initial packet that went out had the two ordinances still on it, but we sent out an updated packet. It was ordinance C-36576 and C-36577, which 36576 was deferred to October 7th agenda, and 36577 was deferred to the October 7th Public Safety and Community Health Committee.
Okay.
The first one is regarding streamlining rental registration requirements, and the second one is relating to the prohibition of sitting in lane on public sidewalks. And then we do have one additional motion that we'll need for the appointments for the Transportation Commission, for the four appointments. There's a request to defer those to October 7th.
Have some of, oh, there's a, yeah, we have some.
Second.
It's been moved and second to defer the appointments to October 7th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Okay. Mr. Jones?
All right, so we're good on the current agenda?
I think we're good on the current agenda.
All right. Now for the advanced agenda for September 30, starting with the consent items, we'll start with item number one, and this will be briefed by Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. For item 1A, the Street Department is requesting approval to renew a value blanket with Western Systems for a cost not to exceed $219,021.94. And then for item 1B, the Street Department is also requesting approval to purchase signal standards at a cost not to exceed $255,000 to renew a value blanket with Valmont Industries. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. We have items two and three. Both these items will be briefed by Lawrence Hurdle.
Good afternoon, Council. Item number two is a request to purchase copper pipe. This was competitively bid and is going to, wrong page. I believe it was Ferguson, but it's $120,000 for a copper pipe, typically used in new service installs and service repairs.
So you're right, the packet says $98,377.95.
I believe that 120 is with tax.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
This one says it includes tax with $98,000.
Would you like clarification on that?
Lauren, who's running your department?
I can look it up again.
We gotta get this together.
We went through, it was $98,000 in the purchase. The total cost, I show, was 120, which I assume is the tax on it, but...
Yeah, if we could get that clarified, and get that on the agenda.
I will get that back to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Item number three is an increase in administrative reserve for the dam spillway projects. The original project was to pull out gate number five, assess the damage to the gate, and then we had to return that back to the Federal Energy Regulatory Committee for their approval on our repair method, and then we created a repair. Until the gate was pulled out, we didn't know what extent the repair was going to be. It is a major repair. We have upcoming change orders on this project, and are asking for administrative reserve increase on the project in order to complete the repairs needed on the gate arms, replace the seal on it. We found lead paint on the original gate that has to be abated out of the river.
Classic.
So there's a number of additional changes to that.
Where's that money going to come from?
We actually had, there's three other projects, portions of which would have dealt with parts of this project. Those three projects are not going, so those funds will be transferred over into this project.
So the extra $2 million would come from the other three projects that were going to happen, but now they aren't going to happen. Is that specifically because this one's $2 million more expensive?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so what happens to us not funding those, or not completing those other three projects? What's the impact?
The impact to that, we are undergoing a failure analysis to rank the highest needs out there. Should those, one of those other three projects still need to go, then those funds will be reallocated in our next budget cycle.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. And then we have items...
But it's still 1.9 million, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
1.9.
All right, so then we have items four through 10. All these items will be briefed by David Payne, who is online with us today.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The first is a value blanket renewal for a four with Helfrich Brother Boiler Works out of Lawrence, Mass. for the purchase of boiler tubes for use at the waste energy facility for routine maintenance. This contract runs from November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2025, with a not-to-exceed value of $1 million plus tax. The next is a value blanket renewal, two of four, with Dykman from Spokane Valley for the as-needed purchase of variable frequency drives for the use at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from December 15th, 2024, to December 14th, 2025, with a not-to-exceed value of $80,000 plus tax. The next item is a one-year value blanket for as-needed purchases of conveyor belt parts for the use at the waste energy facility on our ASH system. This contract runs from October 15th, 2024, through October 14th, 2025, and we awarded to two vendors, Motion Industries of Sunrise, Florida, for not to exceed $65,000 plus tax, and Thomas Conveyor of Burleson, Texas, not to exceed $45,000 plus tax. This allows us to optimize pricing when we purchase the items from either of the contractors. The next is a five-year value blanket with Wimco Incorporated Spokane for the as-needed purchase of spare electrical parts for the cranes at the waste energy facility from November 15th, 2024, through November 14th, 2029, not to exceed $350,000 plus tax, or $70,000 annually. The next item is a purchase from Babcock &amp; Wilcox for gas burner boiler parts for use at the waste energy facility. Gas burners are what we use to heat the boiler up and to combat emissions as needed. The total cost of this contract is $92,979 plus tax. The next item is contract renewal, four of four, with Faust Fabrication Company of Colville, Washington, for the as-needed off-site grapple repairs for the waste energy facility from December 1st, 2024, through November 30th, 2025, not to exceed $95,000 plus tax. And the last item I have for you today is a contract renewal, three of four, with Arrow Concrete and Asphalt Specialties of Spokane Valley for as-needed road repair services to the waste energy facility from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st, 2025, not to exceed $45,000, including tax. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, David. But just a heads up, I think we need a state of the waste energy plant. We see a lot of expenses that consistently come through. So what is the state of the waste energy plant in the update? So just put that in your brain. We'll reach out to you to give us an update on that. We'd sure appreciate it.
No problem, man. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, David.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Then we have item number 11, and this will be briefed by John Eckhart.
Good afternoon. I have a contract amendment for HDR Engineering. They're currently helping the wastewater plant with our permit-related studies. The extension goes through 2026. Maximum cost is $264,428. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, again, on here it says $146,000. Is that the increase that we're giving them to a total of 200?
Correct.
And then what is the, what is the, what's necessary about the renewal here?
So we contracted with them to help us with the writing of some of the studies, which they only have done two out of the four that we need. And so that's what the extension is for, is because they, we have two more studies to do, and then help us with the sampling as well, because it's dangerous being in the river at high flows. Any other questions?
Thank you, John. And then we have item number 12. This will be briefed by Megan Duval.
Good afternoon. I don't have any contract money. I just have management agreements for three nominations to the Spokane Register. The Hotel Collins on Second, the Wright House on 14th, and the Cook House on 27th. So that's all that I have. Briefed at Urban Experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Yes?
Oh, I said, "thank you."
Oh, I thought you said Megan, like...
No, no hard question.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just thank you. Now moving into legislative agenda, resolutions, and final reading ordinances. We do have a resolution 2024-0091 with the accompanying OPR 2024-0829 for a sole source, and this will be also briefed by John.
Hello again. So this one is a sole source for Columbia Electrical Supply. They supply Rockwell and Allen Bradley hardware, software, and support services. And that equipment is used by our wastewater plant sewer, all that stuff, for our SCADA system that controls everything.
Councilor Catcart?
Yeah, so they're the exclusive vendor of those materials? Nobody else sells or resells?
Not that we've found over the years. I know that there's been a lot of different sole sources by different departments in the utilities, so we're trying to combine them into one.
And why is it important that we maintain those products and not a different brand or something else?
So different brands, like at the wastewater plant specifically, different brands can come with different software, and then that doesn't mesh together with other equipment that we use. So...
Councilor Bingle?
Yeah, what was the, what was the research process to see if there was others who would?
So we always have the open bid process to say, this is what we're looking for. And we always try to do everything in kind. And so that's kind of what we go through. And then Columbia is usually the only one who responds over the course of the years that we do it. And this is only for five years, so... Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, John. And then we have ordinance C-36575, 78, and 79. All three of these items have been previously briefed, but I don't know if we need any additional.
Councilor Catcart?
Yeah, I mean, Councilmember Dillon's not here, but he had mentioned that there might be some amendments coming on 36575. Do we know if that's the case, or if this is likely going to be the final version?
Adam is shaking his head no. So this is the final version?
Okay.
All right. Perfect. Now moving on to the first reading ordinances, we have ordinance C-36580. This will be briefed by Dan Bowler.
Good afternoon. This ordinance is a proposed revision to the noise ordinance to allow for two conditions that aren't currently allowed for, which is variance to work at night when on busy roads, and during the hottest part of the summer, when we frequently get requests to work before the 7:00 a.m. start on account of the work conditions that have the rest times. That is a recent state law.
All right, thank you, Dan. And then we have ordinance C-36581. Adam, are you briefing this one?
Yeah, this is the compost procurement ordinance that we briefed last week at PICE, as required under the Organics Management Law at the state.
Thanks, Adam. And then lastly, we have ordinance C-36582. Jackson, are you going to brief this one?
I don't think it needs, we just talked about it.
Yeah, this is the Nebraska one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we briefed this earlier at Binance.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the advanced agenda for September 30th.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Through a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the advanced agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
No.
Abstentions? The agenda is approved. Thank you. We are in recess till 6:00 p.m.